Okay. There was. Getting to. We're already in. All right. All right.
Okay. We're going in for pre-meets. First we'll bring up the West's pledge allegiance first when we get ready in the meeting. Then we'll go over the ethics. And then we'll bring that forward. We'll do a paper. Preservation is, uh, for motorcycle awareness and preservation for, preservation, social, etc., I think he's got. Then we're gonna, we're gonna move airport before the public here. He needs to, it'll be five minutes so we can do that for him. So, and then we've got a zoning text amendment. And we got a request for zoning from R2, R3. County managers report quarterly finance update. Vice Chair is Nate, you wanna be doing the recent test for that? Right, Nate stood there. And airports moving up for this, it was under new business, we're bringing it forward. And then we have the work machine, public comment, and then announcements. So, best I can tell, it's five o'clock. Start meeting.
We're going, we're going somewhere.
Welcome to my first meeting with county commissioners. I'll stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Look, it's a red, it's a red tie.
To the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For invitation and that, I would like to take a moment to remember all of the, that we have lost. And it has been a rough month, and I, we've lost community members, and many of us have lost friends that were close to.
What's doing?
Let's take a moment, remember that what we have lost, remember, all the blessings that we have. Okay, thank you.
Can't hear you back here.
I take a moment to honor the lives of Erica and Erica and Fermi Smith, and Keith and Woodmore, who are tragically gunned down in a horrific murder-suicide. And I'd like everyone to take a moment to think about those lives, and search your own selves, and if you know anyone that is being threatened, harassed, or violent, if you please, go to the bill of justice.
Thank you.
What's this? A block?
Okay. Ethics reminder. In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty.
It's a red tie.
...to all applicable laws requiring official action, to uphold the integrity, the independence of the office, and avoid priorities in existence of official duties, to the faithful performance of duties to the office, and to conduct and welfare of government body in its open and public manner. Is there any item on agenda to outcome which has a direct substantial or reliable financial impact on any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract becoming for the board today? There being none, the board members have the duties and obligation to that. Consent agenda. Anybody want to bring that forward?
I'm with Richard for the conservative agenda. First and second. Commissioner Whitehead first, Mr. Frost second, the minute we have available.
Say, I'll watch the papers. Yeah. Not opposed. We're getting through here.
I'm gonna go, I'll try.
Proclaim motorcycle awareness month. Whereas Asheville and Buncombe County motorcyclists have band together to actively promote more positive image of motorcyclists, promote fair motorcycle legislation, and ensure motorcyclists' freedom. And whereas, these motorcyclists are also working to eliminate prodigial attitudes toward motorcyclists and promote participation in public service programs. And whereas, these motorcyclists organize and participate motorcycle safety, education, riders' training program, and public awareness program. And whereas, the Buncombe County chapter of the Concerned Bikers Association of North Carolina has requested that the month of May be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month. And whereas, this board feels that it is in best interest of all citizens to promote motorcycle safety awareness, and to foster the sense of brotherhood and sisterhood among all users of our county roadways. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe as follows, that the month of May 2018 be proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month. That all citizens of Buncombe County are hereby encouraged to join area motorcyclists in an effort to improve traffic safety, increase motorcycle awareness, and that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this the first day of May 2018 by Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, signed by Vice Chairman Mike Fryer.
What I said, that little fan there is the one that we want to say thank you, because we want to make a point that when you see a motorcycle rider out there, motorcycle, if he may have a full face helmet, you can't see his face, his big leather jacket and boots, and looks, sometimes they look like a space alien coming down the road, but I want everybody to remember that underneath all that is a regular human being, regular guy, got, somebody's waiting for that person to come home that evening. And so, give just a little bit of extra attention, just a little bit of extra space, and we can all make it all safer tonight. Thank you very much.
Next would be Jack Thompson Preservation Society. Mr. L. Whitehead will be presenting. Mr. Whitehead.
This one's easy for me, because I've followed the Preservation Society for a number of years, and we appreciate the job, what you do here in the community, and continue to do. And I'll read our proclamation, County Buncombe Proclamation of May as Preservation Month. Whereas historic preservation gives residents of Buncombe County a deeper understanding of our diverse heritage, and a greater appreciation of our unique history and natural resources. And whereas, historic preservation provides a tangible connection to our history by preserving a part of our environment as a vessel for the story of our past. And whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, creating economic opportunities, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas, Preservation Month provides an opportunity for citizens of all ages and backgrounds to maintain, preserve, and celebrate our country, our county, and our nation's rich history. And whereas, Preservation Month is sponsored by the Preservation Society of Asheville and Buncombe County, a local nonprofit membership organization, celebrating its 42nd anniversary of promoting historic preservation in Asheville. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe as follows. First, that the month of May 2018 be proclaimed Preservation Month in Buncombe County. Second, that this board does hereby call upon our citizens to recognize and participate in this, in this special observance. And third, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this first day of May 2018, Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe, by Mike Frye, Vice Chairman. And thank you for what he did.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Jack Thompson, and I'm the Executive Director of the Preservation Society of Asheville and Buncombe County. I want to thank you for this recognition, and for your support of our colleague organization, the Asheville and Buncombe County Historic Resources Commission. I know that they have come up in your recent budget considerations, and I think even today on your agenda, you are considering a board appointment for that important volunteer organization. Since 1971, our nation has celebrated the importance and power of historic preservation annually in the month of May. And for a century and a half, this dynamic movement has worked to balance progress and a constantly evolving American vision with the importance of recognizing the building blocks of our society represented by our built environment. From mansions to slave dwellings, from towering spires to battlefields, historic preservation reminds us that the past is indeed prologue. Much like the recipe from Grandma that when made reminds us of her and her lessons for us, historic places are our tangible connection to our past. When our children walk the halls of Asheville High School, they can be taught the lesson of the civil rights protests at the then, then Lee Edwards High School, and then go out and create history themselves. I have often said, and will continue to say, that, that our downtown is a history museum with sidewalks. Even in this frenetic development frenzy our city is in today, is it really that hard to look around and think of Asheville in the 1920s boom? Likewise, our fields, our coves, our hollers, as Granny would say, bear witness to our past with farmhouses, barns, and hedgerows built by our family members that came before us. We are certainly dependent on our strong tourist economy, and we have been for over a century. And we must remember why. It is because we are a special place that tells a story, a place that tells a story with our farms, our historic neighborhoods, and assemblage of historic buildings both grand and modest. These are the modest century-old places that we must pay attention to, as they are the glue that binds the Jackson Building to the Grove Arcade, discreet neighborhoods like Jackson Park, Ty Montford, to be related, and legacies of Black Mountain, Sandy Mosh, and Fairview that create the identity of our Buncombe County today. Historic preservation is the ultimate recycling, making the greenest house or building the one that is already built and has been in service for decades. With preservation, the energy represented by this history can continue to be sustainable instead of ending up in a landfill. So join the Preservation Society today in our effort to protect and preserve our home. Just a couple of quick notes, on May 10th, we're having a family fun event over at Grove Park, it's called Croquet in May, so we invite everybody to come out and join the food trucks for that fun event. There will be instruction from a two-time national champion croquet player who lives out in Black Mountain, is coming into town for us. On May 24th, at the Asheville Masonic Temple, we will be presenting the 39th Annual Griffin Awards for Historic Preservation, of which I would remind, the county has received several, most recently for your rehabilitation of the Register of Deeds building. Prior to that, the beautiful mezzanine in our courthouse. Thanks again so much for your time today and for this recognition. Okay, we've got one more that was added. On May the 3rd, it's gonna be National Day of Prayer. Since we don't have anybody that are here to receive it, I'm going to read it, and Vice Chair, I might also take a point of personal privilege before I read it, if that's okay with you. So, as the Vice Chair has mentioned, as, as Commissioner Frost has mentioned, the need for prayer for families, I would add one, many people in our community know of Pastor Ralph Sexton at Trinity Baptist Church, his wife, Musette, had her home going and lost her battle with cancer, and that church has such many people in the community, so we request your prayer for that, that church, and for the many needs, as the commissioners have mentioned tonight. So it's appropriate that we read this, for, May 3rd is the National Day of Prayer, County of Buncombe Proclamation. Whereas, the first National Day of Prayer can be tracked back, traced back to 1775, when the Continental Congress allotted a daily prayer while they were forming the new nation. And whereas, on April 17, 1952, the official National Day of Prayer was passed by Congress, and was signed into law by President Harry Truman. And whereas, in 1988, President Reagan signed into law the establishment of the first Thursday of the month of May each year as a national observance of the National Day of Prayer. Whereas, the National Day of Prayer provides an opportunity for citizens to join together in prayer and acknowledge their faith and beliefs. And now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe as follows, that May 3rd, 2018, be and is hereby proclaimed National Day of Prayer in Buncombe County, that observance of this day be committed to our citizens, whatever their faith, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this first day of May, signed by Vice Chair Mike Fryer.
Vice Chair, I appreciate your opportunity to read that.
Thank you. Well, we have that out of the way, but we had some new business, which is the state of airport preservation. Lou, if you may come out to speak to that. There'll be no accident, be needed, I'm just gonna ask.
Mr. Vice Chair Fryer, rest of the Buncombe County Commissioners, thank you, for having me the opportunity to speak to you this evening, to give you the update of the airport over the last year. Some of the highlights that we have, we have passed out our annual, annual report of activities, you received electronically, and I provided some hard copies earlier this evening. From an air service standpoint, we continued with four, four major airlines. We had a legion at 31% of our market share, American Airlines at 23% of our market share, Delta at 29% of our market share, and United at 17% of our market share. We also, in late slash spring, we added Elite Airways flying non-stop service to Vero Beach from Asheville. We have 11 non-stop destinations, includes Newark, LaGuardia, New York, Chicago, Charlotte, Atlanta, Baltimore, Fort Lauderdale, Sanford, Orlando, St. Petersburg, Puntagorda, Florida, and as I mentioned just a moment ago, Vero Beach, Florida. Our passengers for 2017 was up 15.7% for a total of 956,634. We do expect to reach a million passengers this year in 18. Our seats on airplanes were up to 16.7% for a total of 587,148 seats out of the airport. The largest increase in seats was United, with an 87% increase over what they had last year. From an operational standpoint, we had, the airline operations were up 15% for 18,820, and general aviation military pretty much stayed flat at 47,530 operations. From a construction standpoint, we began Phase 4 of the airfield reconfiguration project, and we're hoping to finish that up this year. We completed our parking garage, which included electrical vehicle chargers for some of the community that uses electrical vehicles. And we also awarded a contract for a terminal assessment study that looks at expansion of the terminal as our growth continues. From a community standpoint, what we've been able to provide, just to name a few, Wings for Autism, our award-winning program for music on the fly, which recognizes and brings in local music talent into the airport to play while we have passengers. Pause for Passengers, it's a therapy dog program that brings dogs and their volunteers into the airport. Continued our Blue Ridge Honor flights, that recognizes the World War II, Korean, and now Vietnam veterans flights. We also have a student artwork showcase, which highlights 10 Western North Carolina schools and their artwork that some of the children have done. And of course, our members of the authority participate in the United Way Day of Impact. From financials, from our financial standpoint, our operating revenue at year ended July 31st, 2017, was $10.7 million in revenue. Operating expenses was $8.4 million, bringing us roughly $2.3 million back to our fund balance, which we put back into capital projects. From an asset standpoint, we have $128.9 million, which was up $14.3 million from the previous year. And lastly, the FAA did recognize us in June of last year as our sole sponsor and owner of the airport, and all of the property is deeded over from the city of Asheville to the, to the Greater Asheville Regional Airport. So we are truly independent authority operating in the state of North Carolina. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. Thank you.
I just gotta comment one, thanks for, for the great work in the last, well, all the time you've been there, but in the last few years, the, the expanding of the non-stop flights. Did you mention Denver?
No, my report began last year, but Denver does start base 16, so we are totally thrilled with that one. It will be our most Western flight that we have non-stop out here. We're expecting to be a big boom for the community and for the airport, we're excited about that.
There's a lot of buzz out there.
It was something that we've been fighting for, for a long time, and we were finally able to bring into our community.
Who's, who's the, uh, carrier?
A Legion will be flying that, twice, twice a week, starting at, some are, some are seasonal, but we're anticipating with the loads that what we're seeing on those, on those flights, we're expecting the Legion to continue that year round.
Most people don't know, but the Legion, they, they run, they run large jets out there.
They do, they're, and they've modernized their fleet, basically out of Asheville, they're flying the Airbus 319 and 320, it's 166 or 176 seat aircraft.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Whereas the first National Day of Prayer can be tracked back, traced back to 1775, when the Continental Congress allotted a daily prayer while they were forming the new nation. And whereas, on April 17, 1952, the official National Day of Prayer was passed by Congress and was signed into law by President Harry Truman. And whereas in 1988, President Reagan signed into law the establishment of the first Thursday of the month of May each year as a national observance of the National Day of Prayer. Whereas the National Day of Prayer provides an opportunity for citizens to join together in prayer and acknowledge their faith and beliefs, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe as follows. At May 3rd, 2018, be and is hereby proclaimed, National Day of Prayer in Buncombe County, that observance of this day be committed to our citizens, whatever their faith, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption adopted this first day of May. Signed by Vice Chair Mike Frye. Vice Chair, I appreciate your opportunity to read that. Thank you. Well, we have that outweighed, but we had some new business, which is the state of airport preservation. Lou, if you may come out to speak to that. There'll be no accident to be needed on this tonight.
Mr. Vice Chair Frye, and the rest of the Buncombe County Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening and give you the update of the airport over the last year. Some of the highlights that we have, we have passed out our annual, annual report of activities. You received electronically, and I provided some hard copies earlier this evening. From an air service standpoint, we continued with four, four major airlines. We had a legion at 31% of our market share, American Airlines at 23% of our market share, Delta at 29% of our market share, and United at 17% of our market share. We also, in late slash spring, we added Elite Airways flying nonstop service to Vero Beach from Asheville. We have 11 nonstop destinations, includes Newark, LaGuardia, New York, Chicago, Charlotte, Atlanta, Baltimore, Fort Lauderdale, Sanford, Orlando, St. Petersburg, Puntagorda, Florida, and as I mentioned just a moment ago, Vero Beach, Florida. Our passengers for 2017 was up 15.7% for a total of 956,634. We do expect to reach a million passengers this year in 18. Our seats on airplanes were up to 16.7% for a total of 587,148 seats out of the airport. The largest increase in seats was United with an 87% increase over what they had last year. From an operational standpoint, we had, the airline operations were up 15% for 18,820, and general aviation military pretty much stayed flat at 47,530 operations. From a construction standpoint, we began Phase Four of the airfield reconfiguration project, and we're hoping to finish that up this year. We completed our parking garage, which included electrical vehicle chargers for some of the community that uses electrical vehicles. And we also awarded a contract for a terminal assessment study that looks at expansion of the terminal as our growth continues. From a community standpoint, what we've been able to provide, just to name a few, Wings for Autism, our award-winning program for music on the fly, which recognizes in bringing local music talent into the airport to play while we have passengers. Pause for Passengers, it's a therapy dog program that brings dogs and their volunteers into the airport. Continued our Blue Ridge Honor Flights, that recognizes the World War II, Korean, and now Vietnam veterans flights. We also have a student artwork showcase, which highlights 10 Western North Carolina schools and their artwork that some of the children have done. And of course, our members of the authority participate in the United Way Day of Impact. From financials, from our financial standpoint, our operating revenue at year ended July 31st, 2017, was $10.7 million in revenue. Operating expenses was $8.4 million, bringing us roughly $2.3 million back to our fund balance, which we put back in two capital projects. From an asset standpoint, we have $128.9 million, which was up $14.3 million from the previous year. And lastly, the FAA did recognize us in June of last year as our sole sponsor and owner of the airport, and all of the property is deeded over from the city of Asheville to the, to the Greater Asheville Regional Airport. So we are truly an independent authority operating in the state of North Carolina. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. Thank you.
I just got to comment one thing for the great work in the last, well, all the time you've been there, but in the last few years, the, the expanding of the nonstop flights. And you mentioned Denver?
No, my report began last year, but Denver does start base 16, so we are totally thrilled with that one. It will be our most Western flight that we have nonstop out of here. We're expecting to be a big boom for the community and for the airport. We're excited about that.
There's a lot of buzz out there.
This is something that we've been fighting for, for a long time, and we were finally able to bring it to our community.
Who's the, who's the, uh?
Character? A legion will be flying that twice, twice a week, starting at, some are, some are seasonal, but we're anticipating with the loads of what we're seeing on those, on those flights, we're expecting a legion to continue that year round.
Most people don't know, but the legion, they, they run, they run large jets out there.
They do. They're, and they've modernized their fleet, or basically out of Asheville, they're flying the Airbus 319 and 320. It's 166 or 170 seat aircraft.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. I'm Nathan Pennington, Planning Director here for Buncombe County. We do have a text memo for you tonight from the zoning ordinance, and we'll get Attorney Prude, advise us on this, but it consists of three parts, so it might be helpful since they are different sections of the zoning ordinance and break it into three separate votes. I think that's what we did for the planning board.
I think that would be of course pleasure. It's all in one document, so it'd be done in either way, but if it makes it easier from your perspective to explain it, I would suggest that.
Yeah, I mean, they're very different topics. I could go through it one at a time, and then we could, it's however you guys want to do it.
I mean, they're, they're different, so they're probably better. I'd suggest one.
Okay. All right, so we'll just take it one by one. The, the first one is Section 78-624. This is, this is just to modernize the zoning ordinance and stay consistent with North Carolina state statutes. Basically, it involves appeals from the decision of the Board of Adjustment where they go before the court system. And what it does is it adds a point one after General Statute 153A-345. It's now point three, four, five, point one. That is the extent of the first text amendment. And do you all want to have your, your vote per, as we go through each one, or, and, or what do you advise?
Can't us understand and find it in here? Where is it in our, the, the one he's talking about?
Okay, so basically, if you were to, to look at your document there, this would be right before the off-street parking table. The off-street parking table is 78-658. This is Section 78-624 entitled Appeals from Decision on Board of Adjustment. And at the very end of that line, it says point one in red with an underline. It is on page two of eight.
Okay, it's on page two of eight.
The Vice Chairman, I mean, if we were to break this up, we might, we're going to have to, I believe we're going to have to break up public comment for each section, but.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so a question. A question on this. Yeah, a question for, for, and I, okay, this is pages one through eight. We have two, I, two text amendments in, okay. We have three text amendments in those eight pages.
That's correct.
Does that matter? Do you approve that they're all in one document and they're not in three separate documents? Does that complicate our vote?
That's the hitch. We can run it any way the board chooses. It is in one document, but I think Mr. Bennett is trying to explain it, make it easier to explain if we want to. So I think perhaps, as an option, let's just go through each one, one by one, ask a public comment.
So do you want to go for public comment on this?
Go for public comment. Any public comment on this issue? Anyone? Back and back, come on in front.
My only comment would be, if it's a public hearing, and it made absolutely no sense what he's talking about, about the zoning, with numbers and letters representing things to say with a big documentation, on your part, where's the public? Does the public get to know anything about what's going on? Or just a few commissioners and this man over here, whoever he might seem to be? I wasn't here for this, but it just seems like it's not clear. It shouldn't have, if it's public hearing, super clarity to the public. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I think the lady makes a good point. The lawyers know what this is, and I've been here long time, I don't know what the heck you're doing. I don't know what he's trying to interpret or what he's adding to this. What is the text amendment for? What does it specifically describe? I mean, if it don't make sense to two of us, somebody ain't explaining something, so be nice having explanation.
Any more public comment? Close public comment at five thirty-one. Nathan? I think there's two good questions being asked myself, so can we have a description or a point?
Sure. So basically, what this section means is that if someone goes to the Board of Adjustment for a variance or a conditional use permit for any type of development they might do in the county, if there's an appeal, this simply cross-references the state statute so that we are correctly referencing that in the zoning ordinance. So every time that the General Assembly makes a change, we simply want to keep up with our documentation to correctly reflect what the state's trying to do. That's really all this is trying to do, is just housekeeping for this particular section here. The other two I'm going to describe are going to have a lot more substance and a lot more context, we want to get into those.
So I have a comment, Vice Chair, on this, that the, this is, it's not unusual for the commissioners to ask questions, and from time to time, as they are just like everybody else in the room, we might be a little confused for clarity purposes when we ask these questions. Number two is the one that we're voting on. It is page number two, is Section 78-624, Appeals from Decision of Board of Adjustment. And it says very simply, appeals from the Board of Adjustment may be taken to court pursuant to General Statutes 153A-345. Those numbers don't mean much to me, but what it means is for the, for the public is that if they don't agree with the Board of Adjustments, they have a remedy, and that's what it says, and we're making the correction to be in line with the, with the state statute. Is that correct? That should make that very crystal clear. I'll, I'll move that that is, that the request is consistent with the county comprehensive land use plan reasonable in the public interest. Now, motion and second. Do we have a, how many ayes?
Aye.
How many nays?
Six ayes.
Six ayes, thank you.
Okay, text amendment number two. This involves Section 78-658B, off-street parking, the minimum parking requirements. It updates the standards for off-street parking requirements. So basically, what we're trying to do is, we have a parking table in the zoning ordinance. So when someone comes to us and they're like, hey, we want to put in a putt-putt golf course, or we want to build a hotel, what we do is we tell them you need a minimum amount of parking spaces to satisfy the requirement for that development. Well, we've had a parking table in place that has had really no substantive changes since the days of limestone. So it has some things that are fairly obsolete in it. For instance, we had sanitariums, tourist courts, and convalescent homes for the age. Obviously, terms change. To give you an example of one thing we ran across that was just completely out of place, there was a requirement, some guy was trying to build a putt-putt course on Hendersonville Road, and he needed 300 parking spaces for an 18-hole golf course. Obviously, that didn't make sense for a putt-putt course, so what we try to do is go through this document every once in a while and make sure we modernize, and make sure that it's reasonable, and we have an adequate number of parking spaces for what's, what's proposed to be developed. That's what this, that's what this change does, and what we do is we also built in a provision, if we didn't find a particular use identified in our use table, that we could consult what was called the Planner Advisory Service. It's a booklet put out by the American Planning Association, and it allowed us to look throughout the United States and look at other communities and see what kind of parking they were proposing for a use that might come our way. It is Asheville, it's Buncombe County, and we get some things that are just, you know, you might get yoga and goat farm. You just never know what you're going to get. So that's what this text amendment proposes to do, and that's what you have before you tonight.
Okay. Any comment left up here? I'll have some questions in a minute. I'm opening up for public comment at five thirty-six. Any comments from Lou here? Closing comments at five thirty-seven. Thank you. That's a record, Vice Chair. Good job. So I, just a couple of comments if I, if I can. Okay, so tell me about the American Planning Association, Planning Advisory Service Report Number 432, which is a long, complicated thing and scares me to death. But one is, is that this is not, this is for Buncombe County, this is not for the city of Asheville.
That's correct.
Correct. For those that are sitting out there, this is for Buncombe County. And I did look at all the, and for clarity for the, for the public, is if they'll look at these reports, they'll see that there are, there are lines drawn through very clearly what's coming out, and then what's added is written in, in red. So it is very clear and transparent what, what's been done. It looked like to me it simplified it, though the list is very long, and I read each one of them, and nothing, you know, scared me in the, but I'd like to know, have we used that before? Are we comfortable with that standard? You know, will it apply? Does it, does it suit Buncombe County and not tailored to cities, et cetera? Can you comment on that?
That's correct. So I also want to mention that another thing we did is we actually alphabetized the list, which made it a lot easier. We have a minimum requirement, we're not prescribing a maximum requirement of spaces, so that gives us the flexibility we need. And the report that you mentioned is used across the country in multiple jurisdictions, not just urban, but rural. So what it does is it gives you the flexibility to look beyond just that, that urban realm and go out and look at counties, particular ones that have rural influence as well. And it's especially helpful to planners when we run across the uses like the example that I used, when it's just something so off the wall that we really need a little help and something to fall back on if we need to.
One of the things that I liked about the changes is that when it came to housing, it, it did not break out every possible description of housing, you know, what it was, residential required. So it included, we're a single family, two-family, manufacturing homes, or whatever, just one line, which I thought was correct.
That's right. There's no, there's really no need to, to keep some of the practices that we've seen in the past. The goal is just to simplify and make it easier on me.
Any more questions from the board? Do we have a motion? I think you're saying, I think you're saying that it's, that the rest of the request is consistent with county comprehensive land use plan reasonable in the public interest? The only thing I'm very smart on, I got it written down there on this paper.
I finally saw it, you guys.
You got to get you one of them. Makes you look like a genius. Thank you. Okay. Do they have ayes? How many ayes? Aye. How many nays? It passes six ayes. And so number three.
Okay. The third and final text amendment deals with Section 78-677D. This is under the Procedure for Obtaining a Conditional Use Permit, Development Plan Submission, and to add a requirement for a traffic impact analysis. And to give you a frame of reference for where we are, if you will go to Section 78-677 on page seven of your document, under Division Six, Conditional Uses, at the end of the parking table, you will see number 12 in red with the underline for the text that has been added. And I will move on to explain the nature of the request. The text amendment itself adds a traffic impact study requirement for conditional use applications in excess of selling 75 dwelling units. We're not specifying what needs to be included, but we, it will need to be completed by a licensed traffic engineer in the state of North Carolina. So this is for larger projects, multi-family, ones that require conditional use permit and review by the Board of Adjustment. And we're saying it must be included as part of the application submittal, and it will be forwarded to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. We're seeing an increase in the number of developments in Buncombe County, especially those that are large scale and multi-family in nature. Why are we doing this? Well, we're seeing multiple applications that's actually been continued by the Board of Adjustment. This document can provide additional tools in helping our volunteer Board of Adjustment make informed decisions in an often contentious environment. It provides guidance and recommendations as it relates to the North Carolina Department of Transportation required on and off-site traffic improvements. We often see ones that may require deceleration lane, a traffic light, or some type of improvement that's necessary to allow the flow of traffic to, to take place without impeding it when multiple people are trying to enter an apartment complex or exit during the first part of the morning. These can even assist with internal site parking lot access and maneuverability plans. And they can also work to address community traffic concerns, and they're based on scientific research in the study of traffic patterns. They're completed by an independent third-party engineer that's hired by the developer, and then will be reviewed by the Department of Transportation. That is the extent of the, the request and the text amendment for you tonight. The planning board did approve this amendment on February the 19th, as well as the other two portions that we previously went through, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Question?
Question I have only. When we look at 75 units, and we're talking about the average cost of this is what, around $12,000?
They can range. Some on the, on the low end could be that, and they can certainly increase in cost when you're talking about a development of 300 to 500 units.
Right. You know, my concern is, if we start talking about affordable houses, this could have an effect. Now, 75 is low. You know, I would say more like 100 or more. Yes, that would be a concern I would have, because regardless of how we look at it, this cost is going to be passed on, you know, poorly. Did you have any discussion on that?
We did. If you want to think in context of $12,000, it could be the cost of a new roof. We also tried to come up with a reasonable threshold. 75 is, is what we put, put here before you tonight. You're certainly more than welcome to advise us on what you think that threshold should be, but as staff, that's what we're presenting as, as the number based on a review of the applications that we've seen and just looking generally across the board. Some, we don't want to go obviously too low, because that would impact some of our smaller developments that, that tend to be more affordable in nature. I will say this, many of the applications are actually, and many of the applicants are actually going ahead and proactively submitting. developments that tend to be more affordable in nature. I will say this, many of the applications are actually, and many of the applicants are actually going ahead and proactively submitting a traffic impact analysis without being required. And the reason being is if you get a room full of folks from the neighborhood that are upset about development, they've already got that done. And they can say, look, we've already taken this step. We've shown no negative impacts from our development. So what we're seeing, and if you use the Board of Adjustment as a barometer, we're already seeing this take place where the Board of Adjustment just doesn't feel comfortable approving these, and they're sending applicants back and saying, we need you to do this before we're even going to take up your application.
So a question. Thank you, Commissioner Whitehouse, for bringing that up. Question for Mr. Prue. Can we change the number on this if we choose to do so tonight?
I was just fishing around for the advertisement. The advertisement.
We amended it.
Jim has said 75. I haven't seen the advertisement. It says 75. Send it back at this urban level.
So if, so I'm inclined with my, well, Commissioner here, that the number is too low. So does that mean that we would need to vote tonight to not have it sent back with a recommendation of the higher number? Is that how we?
I'm having all the information. I think that's a safe bet. I mean, it just sets you back to 30, 35 days for the board to say.
Which is fine.
I have a question. How did you get to 75?
We looked at our applications and the trend lines we were seeing, and that's where we chose this number. Like I said, you don't want to, you don't want to go too low. And I certainly wanted to put that out there. Attorney Prue was correct that we do have to advertise at a specific number, but I wanted to tell you all your options tonight rather than you just feel like you have to vote on something. It's staff initiated, so we can definitely take it back to the planning board.
So that doesn't create hardship for you?
Well, I agree with that also, that 75 is a low number. But without our chairman, apparently, I would like the $30.
Actually, we can, we can still, I think what we're talking about is a bit off. We can, we can make, send it back.
Yeah.
We can still send it back.
Yeah.
I think you, I think you're voting to object to that.
That's correct. That's what we did.
In a little while after they talk.
We're going to, we're going to open up public comment on this.
Yeah.
At 6:47. 5:47. I'm trying to get a little lighter here. Come on in.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Prior. My name is Carter Webb, the Commissioners. I'm the President of the Oak Forest Property Owners Association in South Asheville. Our development is right off of Overlook Road. I'm sure you guys remember the development, the proposed development. So the property on Overlook Road is actually in the county, surrounded by a city. We had a town hall meeting back in June. The both Commissioners, Belcher and Presley attended, graciously attended the meeting, where we were concerned about a development of about 298 apartments on a steep slope. We were really pushing at that time to have a traffic study put through. And you guys were very gracious and listened, and it sounded like you were not for the project. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm here today to ask you to support this modification, even with the 75 units. When they changed the units, when they modified the project, they went from being an apartment complex to 90 units. And if you've driven down Overlook Road, it's pretty packed. It's pretty crowded. So even with 90 units, 90 homes, it was still going to be an issue. I live on West Ridge Drive. In October of last year, a drunk driver went down my road going at 60 miles per hour on a 25 mile per hour road, hit my tree, and flipped over and caused all sorts of damages. Thankfully, nobody was there. My wife had checked the mail about 30 minutes before that. A neighbor up the street, his, their teenage daughter was driving up shortly, like not even a minute after this guy had done this. Recently, the city of Asheville put in speed bumps, speed humps, which hopefully has helped out. It has helped out, but it will continue to help out. But I do think that having a traffic study with 75 units is reasonable because the majority of these that are coming through are not affordable housing. They're not. The Aiken Road project, there were 298 proposed coming through. They did do a traffic study. The Board of Adjustments requested the traffic study be done. The traffic study came out. This was in December of last year, November of last year. But the residents weren't able to look and review the traffic study. They were only able to look at the date of the Board of Adjustment report. So I'm here to ask you to approve this. It doesn't sound like you're going to, but I would respectfully ask that you do approve this as it's written. Thank you.
Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would like to piggyback on what he just said. I think he's absolutely right. I think you need to be voting on it like it is. If you stop and think about all these big things that's been happening with these apartments, and there are quite a few being built and is in the building state, if you think about that, there's not any more land being grown. There's highways are not getting done quick either. So when you start packing these things up and requiring 100 and some, 125, you're just asking for more problems because the ones that's already built there and another comes online, it can be a small one and have a great big impact on what you've already got there. So I think you need to think about the 75. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I think the state, does the state? Anybody else want to speak? Time to close. Public speaker. 5:52. Thank you. What does the state requirement say?
So the state requirement can vary. I don't have the particular numbers for the state because this text amendment, what it's sought to do was prescribe what would be a higher standard. And since the county does not maintain any roads like Asheville, the gentleman just up here, he is in a unique position in that there's the city around him. So a lot of the roads he's referencing are in the city. And since the city maintains roads, they have their own standards. So we're in a unique position to where we would have a requirement and we would basically be forwarding on the study itself to the DOT to review. But they have their own particular thresholds, and I'd have to bring you a more of a detailed report and potentially could bring Troy Wilson in from the NC DOT, should you instruct us to do that.
I'm, I'm really supportive of this. When you talk about community concerns, one of the biggest things is traffic and these apartments. And I appreciate the work you've done, and I'm glad Mr. Webb was here because this isn't just a number. These are people's lives. And, you know, right now it's in South Asheville on Henderson Mill Road, but it's going crazy. And so to me, I think 75 is a good number. And to use the case of things aren't affordable, if you add up how much something costs in putting 75 units in, $12,000 or even $20,000 traffic study towards it, and for the impact it has on citizens is stark. So I'm very supportive of this work.
So I've got some more questions. I want to hear more about the 70, and I want to hear more about how you arrived at 75.
Okay. So like I said, we studied the applications that we've seen going to the Board of Adjustment and really started to refine at what units we were picking up on the public comments. And, well, it's not a lot of units that requires a review by the Board of Adjustment, but we didn't want to set the bar too low, and we also didn't want to set it too high. And so finding that, you know, perfect number, there's no perfect science to it. So, and that's, I think that's why we're having a discussion tonight.
That's right.
Ask these questions. And that's why I also didn't want to say, well, you know, you got to vote on this. You don't. And we could certainly take it to a higher threshold if you instruct me to do so and take it back to the planning board.
So I heard that, and I'm sorry, I'll host after this. I heard information that I didn't know, which was the 90 unit that was where it fell in between. And Overlook Road was, was a project that I was very concerned about. And if I would have voted, I'd have voted against it very clearly because of just the location and their needs and, you know, a lot of other information. It just wasn't good for the community. And I would have, I would have supported that, the people's right to sell that property. They did, but it just wasn't a good fit for that community. I think it all worked out. I think the process worked fine. But that one did, do a lot of these projects fall between 75 and 90?
Depends on what kind of product you're looking at. Let's use Overlook for example. Over the years, we've seen numerous applications, and they've all never come to fruition.
True.
But, I mean, the site is tricky. It's got topography. So basically, we saw a multi-family product. They also had some issues with, they were going to have to get water there, they were going to have to put in a tank, potentially a pumping station. I don't know about rock, and I mean, you know, what's under the surface there, the geotech report. But the other part of this is that one, one version of the project was going to be a single-family subdivision after they pulled back from the multi-family development. Now, a single-family subdivision is a bit different, that that goes, that application goes to the planning board. That's another discussion, and we'll have to adjust our numbers accordingly based on what you tell me tonight. Because right now, someone is to submit for a, for a just single-family subdivision. You would not, as it's currently written, have to submit a traffic study and take it to 300 units. 300 single-family lots. And that's different from obviously a multi-family development. Well, we didn't even have that just a while back. So, you know, this is kind of new for all of us.
Okay. Any more questions? Personally, I've listened to both sides, and I understand, I think both sides, but 75 seems like a weak number. You just throw in 300 out there. 75 is a quarter of 300. That's what it is. And, you know, 100, 120? I personally just think, I think that if we move it around a little, there's room, but you just don't. You just, I live in the neighborhood that there's 42 basically homes. I never, when I come out in the mornings, I might have one car behind me to get out on the road, sometimes two, but that's it. Everybody don't come out at the same time. So, you know, they go from the top of the mountain down to, I live at, and so it's, I think we're trying to push an issue too far too quick. I, I personally would like to just relook at this one myself. I mean, and if other Commissioners agree, that's fine. I think that's okay too.
Well, you know, after listening to the gentleman from South Asheville, you know, I have to sort of rethink that because I live in the city of Asheville where, you know, it's regulated. It's a different ballgame. But when you think of the areas in the county that are next to the city line, you know, I can see where we could have problems with that, you know, and it's going to be the smaller units. I can understand where the 75, you've come up with that. You know, I was thinking about the areas where it's nothing, you know, more or less. But that is something we need to consider.
And it's tricky. I mean, remember when we had our infrastructure talk? We talked about the urban level areas and rural level areas and the, you know, when the Weaverville Nashville ETJ disappeared and we took over control, that's where we're seeing a lot of the contention because a lot of times when you get out in more rural areas, you lack the infrastructure, so you don't see the densement. So obviously, that's, that's the tricky part. Again, if you set it too high, you're going to pack the room with Board of Adjustment. So where do you find that, that middle ground with the seesaw that we looked at at our previous conversation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the planning board's conclusion of the budget. And reasonable public interest.
Before we get, so, I understand, I, wait before, include for a second.
We still do not.
We just need to put it on. But the overlook deal, I, what can we do? I mean, overlook is absolutely one of the most dangerous places that we probably got in our county right now. We've never had that many people to, you know, verbally come to meetings and speak out about what was happening in time in the Hendersonville Road and Longshores Road. It was terrible. But as you get out in different areas, you know, that's what I did. 300, I wasn't aware the number was that high. So, I mean, other Commissioners, you know, would do what's best for everyone, but, you know, 75 is low. I think 300 is very high. And if any of the others want to go along with waiting and getting anything back from the state or seeing if they are something better, you know, 100, 75, 100 is not a big difference, but 100 to 300 is a big difference.
So I've got, I've got another comment. I think this is an example from me after hearing from some additional information and clarity from you that I don't think the difference between 75 and 100 is very significant. So I'll be supporting it. Okay. We've got a motion in a second. Any more questions?
I also support it as written. I just want to take a second and say thanks to staff when you presented to us about infrastructure. You talked about that seesaw.
Right.
And this seems like a great example of staff having worked really hard to come up with a recommendation that helps that seesaw balance for a second. So thank you.
And we'll have to rebalance the seesaw again based on what you tell me tonight because we'll have to equalize the subdivision, which is, you're right, higher right now, but that was done at a time when we had nothing.
Right.
Don't, don't get ahead of us. Don't get ahead of us. Just do this one thing tonight. Don't get way out there. No, no, it isn't. Yeah, it might be a different result.
Yeah.
We've got a motion in a second. Do we have a, how about?
We have a motion in a second. But I didn't want to say anything. Thanks for breaking this up. It was very good for me to understand too.
And I think myself, you know, I'll see where the other Commissioners are at present time. So I say you're probably going to get your votes, but we need to look into other areas. Let's try this again. How many ayes?
Aye.
How many nays? It's a six of them. Okay. Now, you're back again, Nathan. Request for R2 to R3 in Hawkins and 258 Starms Cove Road.
Thank you again, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. I'll go ahead with the slide. This is a rezoning request for 1.78 acres located at 258 Starms Cove Road. Basically, the request is from R2 to R3. The applicant seeking to rezone the subject property in order to allow the placement of a manufactured home. The property is currently vacant. It's directly accessed by Starms Cove Road. Starms Cove Road is an NC DOT maintained road. Properties to the north, the subject parcel, they contain a mix of site-built and manufactured homes, and they're zoned at R3 as well. Property to the east is vacant and zoned at R2, and properties to the west and south are vacant or contain, and contain a mix of site-built homes. The proposed map amendment would not be detrimental to the owners, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding community. It meets a number of the goals outlined in the Bunkham County Land Use Plan. vacant. It's directly accessed by Starms Cove Road. Starms Cove Road is an NCPG maintained road. Properties to the north, the subject parcel, they contain a mix of site-built and manufactured homes, and they're zoned at R3 as well. Property to the east is vacant and zoned at R2, and properties to the west and south are vacant or contain, and contain a mix of site-built homes. The proposed map amendment would not be detrimental to the owners, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding community. It meets a number of the goals outlined in the Bunkin County Land Use Plan. Therefore, it's the recommendation of the Planning and Development Department to approve the rezoning. It's compatible with surrounding properties that are also developed with manufactured homes. It's adjacent to other R3 zone properties. It's located out of the steep slopes, high elevations, moderate or high slope stability hazard areas, and it's located outside of any identified FEMA flood hazard areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions from up here? One other public comment at six oh four. Any public wants to become this?
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Remember, I want to say that Mr. Hawkins, I've known him for a long time. He owns his property. They've been there a hundred years, you know. But this fits right into my neighborhood. He's back door to me. He throws rocks at me and I throw rocks at him, you know. Good neighbors, and I don't see a thing wrong with it. Think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any other comments? Close public comment at six oh six. Any questions? Any motion? I'll make a motion to, to approve. I do want to say that this is a community that knows how to live with each other and that this is an opportunity to afford the housing in the area and we support it. And I find this request is consistent with the county coverage of land use plan, reasonable and in the public interest. I have a motion by Commissioner Bev. Second by Commissioner Frost. Any more discussion? Like to have a yes?
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Six oh. Thank you. Okay, now we have a quarterly report. Financial, uh, ten quarter will present an update. No action will be taken in that.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, it's my pleasure to start us off with the third quarter budget update.
Wait, put that clock in that black thing over there with the, thank you, yeah. I'm not kidding. That thing is, that thing was fixed. It's got to go. Give me a second.
I'll start it. So it's my pleasure, my, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, to present the third quarter budget update. As you can see here, it kind of gives you a snapshot of where we are as of March 31st of this fiscal year. Our 330.9 million dollar amended budget, we have brought in about 254 million in revenues. You can see from the chart on the left, majority of those are from our property tax revenues. And then on the right, on the expenditure side, we've spent about 28.3 million. It's about 64% of our budget. And in the next few slides, I'll go into more detail on these. So property tax revenues are, of course, our largest revenue source. You can kind of see from the trend, we start getting the bulk of those when the bills are sent out and it peaks when the due date happens in early January. So as of March 31st, we have received almost 98% of that as revenues. We'll continue to get smaller amounts in throughout the rest of the fiscal year for late payments and also the motor vehicle tax continues to come in. Then our governmental revenues are primarily federal and state revenues. Those do have a lag because a lot of them are based on, you have to expend the money first and then you get the revenue in later. We also have some revenues that are only, we only receive one time a year, like the beer and wine tax from the state we get in May. We also get some quarterly revenues that are on a lag, so we get the last one of those in mid-September. So that kind of trend is as expected, what we would, we think we were, where we would be. Sales tax revenues are on a three-month lag from the state. So you can see here, we've gotten six of the 12 months so far and we've received almost 53%. So that is trending a little above budget. And then shifting over to expenditures, the gray bar there is the, represents the budget and the blue part is the actual expenditures to date as of March 31st. I will say, there's a more detailed analysis of this in, in the report that's published online. But again, you can see, actually, I think I skipped a revenue. Can you take out the other revenue as well? Yes, sorry. My notes still match. Just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything before you. So these expenditures by function, again, the gray bar is the budget and the blue is the expenditures. Again, some of that is due to lags in expenses and debt service. We do have some large payments that are, that happened in the fourth quarter. We did also have the board take some action earlier this year where you use one-time savings to pay cash for some projects versus borrow. So that did help our debt service payments as well. So we do pay a little post through the end of August to all departments because when you receive invoices, there, there is a lag on that. So, so altogether, I'll say the projection from the last quarterly update has stayed very constant. When we presented in the last quarter, we were estimating to end about, spending about $250,000 in fund balance. And the estimate for this quarter is 260,000, so just a $10,000 change. And that's less than a tenth, one-tenth of one percent of our total budget. So, kind of a nominal change there. But we'll say as we go into the fourth quarter, we still have quite a ways to go. And we consider we still get revenues through the middle of September. So as we bring you the fourth quarter report, it will continue to refine and get more accurate and keep you updated as we, as we continue along. So glad to answer any questions you may have. And again, pointing out, there's a comprehensive amount of detail in the report online as well, if you want information.
Just want to comment on that, the slide that's up. Is the showing education spending is the highest expenditure by function. My understanding that ends up that way in the year or two, is that, is that accurate? The net amount of money spent on education is our highest expenditure in the county?
Yes, that's correct.
Diane, thank you. Your name was on the sheet, but I apologize.
Thank you.
Now that Diane has warmed you up. So what Diane spoke to is included in that quarterly financial report that you have, that we made your copies of. And thanks, Diane, for covering the budgetary side of that. As well, so we made that commitment back in November that we would provide you these quarterly updates, which coincided with your request for Diane to, Diane and I to come back and sort of walk you through our financial condition. So this, I'm pleased to present our second quarterly, quarterly financial report that we've done. And I would like to take the time to thanks, thank our, our finance and budget staff for the work that they have put in for this. Especially, I'd like to thank my finance staff, which is Dustin Clark, Autumn Libers, and Blair Chamberlain, who have put in several hours of their time getting you this information and getting this information to the public. And as we move forward with these reports, it really is very helpful for us because it, it really just sort of sets the stage for when we get to the end of the fiscal year, we'll be set and ready to go for the audit, which we are, I think we're just about getting geared up to start that process here in the next month or so. So as part of the quarterly reports, you know, we're, I'll just briefly sort of highlight some of the things that we do. It includes the budget review. It has a discussion of our changes in fund balance. There is a piece in there, the general fund actuals and obligations, which is at the last meeting, we, as part of that electronic payment resolution, there is a requirement for us to show you what our commitments are, which are our coverances. So there is a page in there that complies with that requirement from last, what we brought to you last meeting. Today, what I would sort of like to do is just sort of highlight some of the big events that went on in the last quarter. And one of the big events was the fact that we went out for 61.1 million dollars of debt back in March. This is the first debt issuance we have had in three years. And so I think it was significant to just talk briefly about that. These are projects that were previously approved over the last three years. And all of these are for school capital projects. So whether it be the 25 million dollars for the major innovations of Asheville High School, or the 2 million dollars that we're spending on the Kane Creek Middle School roof, or the, I think it's 12 million dollars for the community high school, and a sundry of other paving jobs, major capital expenses. We did go out and, 61.1 million dollars. All of this, again, just to reiterate, is being paid for our Article 39 sales tax revenue. This is not coming from general fund money. This is being paid for through the Article 39 sales tax, which is specific to the School Capital Fund Commission. I, I sort of feel like that's an important point to make, is that the, those are not property tax dollars they're paying for that, but are sales tax. As part of the process of the debt issuance is, part of that process is you do have to go and get your credit ratings affirmed. And one of the, the exciting things that I would like to just highlight is the fact that both Moody's and Standard and Poor's did affirm our AAA credit rating. And so while this is a really good indication of the county government's strong financial health, this is also very indicative of the financial health of the community, of the county as well. Not just the county government, but the county, generally speaking, the economy of the county. And sort of, it speaks to the strong institutional framework that Bunkin County and even Western North Carolina has. That speaks to, you know, what the likes of the city government, Mission Hospital, the strong manufacturing base that we have. So I just wanted to, I, I think it's just important to highlight the fact that, you know, the credit ratings really are about us and how we manage our fiscal resources and you as the board in setting your policies. But it's also, it's really indicative about the economy of the area as well. Just as an update, so with that debt issuance, that does put us at 458.6 million dollars in our debt portfolio. But I would like to point out that we do have our debt service payment coming up in, in June 1st. The way, the way it works is we have a smaller debt service payment in December, and then we have our large debt service payment in, in June. And we will be making a 36 million dollar debt service payment on June 1st. And of that, 26.4 million dollars of that will go to principal retirement. So while it's, while we're at 458 million right now, that will go down to about 432 million dollars by the end of the fiscal year. And you'll just, so, here is just a listing of, just the different, the different debt issuances that we have out there and just the balances and maturity dates of those.
Mr. Florkin, you go back one more. Want to make a comment as I made earlier? 269 million dollars, 270 million dollars, 58% of that debt is for education.
Yes, that was, I wanted to point that out. So thank you for, for pointing that out. Yes.
You're welcome.
Two hundred, almost 270 million dollars of our debt portfolio is for education.
That's, that's funded through sales tax.
Through sales tax. Whether it be, so part of that is also the AB tax, but it is funded through Article 39 and Article 46 sales tax.
Right. So it's not property tax related, which is, which is a big deal. It's a big commitment. It's still a big commitment, but it's also a big commitment on part of the board, which I appreciate. But it's, it's also, it needs to be very clear.
Yes.
Can you go back to the bond rating?
Yes.
I, I take this slide to mean a pat on the back. And, well, I think a pat on the back is very appropriate for all the measures that senior leadership has done to correct what happened in Bunkin County. We know what happened in Bunkin County. One agreement was on the front page of the newspaper 32 times. So I don't want us to pat ourselves on the back for this. A pat on the back maybe for all the things we've done so this can never happen again. But the citizens of Bunkin County, their house was robbed, and I take offense at any pat on the back for that.
And I will point out that those rating maintenance reports are included as part of your, as part of your packet, the quarterly report. One of the things in regards to debt, I would also like to highlight is that we do have a debt policy, a policy that, that you as a board have approved, which is very consistent with best practices across the country. And as, this is just a slide that sort of indicates the fact that we are in compliance with, with the big major metrics that we have. And one I would like to point out is just the 10-year payout ratio there at the bottom, which basically says that 63.23% of our debt service will be retired within a 10-year period of time.
That's a really good slide. That's very simple.
Yes. Reasonably, I'd like to speak about investments. So right now, we have 193.5 million dollars in our investment portfolio. That, I will say, is probably the biggest number you will ever see in our portfolio. It just happens to be as the timing because again, we have, we've just come off of collecting our property tax bills. So that number will, will start dropping pretty drastically over the next several months. So I just don't want anyone to get the impression that that is what we normally carry in our debt portfolio. One of the things I would point out is we are very secure and safe in our investments. That is per-state policy. And so you will not find any of our investments in high-risk investments. So you will see lots of, lots of our money sitting in agencies, treasuries, and municipals, commercial paper, which are very liquid products. I can sort of walk you through some of those if you would like. But just rest assured that all of our investments are collateralized and are very, very secure. And this slide basically just sort of shows our investment priorities are safety, liquidity, and yield, with safety and liquidity being the two most important of the three. And really, this is very consistent with the requirements of North Carolina. We were looking at some of our investments from about a decade ago. And you will see, if, if someone were to compare us from 2006 and '07 where we had investment income of around 5 million dollars a year, it's now around a million dollars a year. That is because the state really was not regulating how you invested. And so we had lots of higher risk investments then. So I just want to sort of point that out if someone is, is one looking back over trends. Because what I will say is, there, if you look to the right, because of the, some of our strategies that we've implemented within the last year or so, our investment earnings are actually going up. So we're squeezing every little bit that we can out of the policy that we have. And those are the, the two major highlights of, I, I felt like that I would like to point out for this. So more than happy to address any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Diane, you too. Okay. Going on with the gentleman. Port of on this.
So I've got an nomination to make for the airport. We have a few here.
We have a real appointment, Matthew Burke.
Second.
Any ayes?
Aye.
Any noes? Matthew Burke, appointed, six oh. Ayes?
Aye.
Noes?
I'd like to nominate Susan Scheinrod for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
A second.
Ayes?
Aye.
Ayes. Six oh. Okay, all the commissions are done.
One more.
One more, yeah, I don't know.
Excuse me.
Turn your mics on.
Ayes.
John Allen Bernard for the Raspel Volunteer Fire Department.
Second.
Ayes. Ayes. Six oh. It is time for public comment. Time limit for individuals' comments to the board is three minutes. If the time expires, you may leave any questions longer with your name, address, phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. The board deserves the right to deny a public address on any subject previously presented to the board during the same meeting. For the comment. Yes, sir, come on.
Folks, my name is Harry Vez. I'm from Swanville, North Carolina. I've lived there right at 50 years, been paying property taxes 50 years. I've lived there longer than that. The last time I was here was on Communist Workers' Party Day, which is today, May 1st, 2007. That's when three county commissioners voted to deny Buncombe County property owners their liberty by denying them the right to vote on zoning. Three county commissioners. There was an election that was coming up in less than 30 days and they refused to allow the county to decide that issue. And all this evening, I see y'all are working, working your juju there, trying to figure out how you're going to do this and that with somebody else's property. I was in this chamber when a man had 20 acres of land and wanted to put a trailer on it and the county commissioners denied it to him because somebody with 200 acres of land didn't want that trailer there. In any event, that's what I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments? Jerry?
Thank you, Jerry and the board. Sales tax, property tax. Sale of the big old hospital over here for $1.8 billion. Ain't that amazing? We're going to get some money now. We're looking for a tax decrease. These fellows presenting this budget tonight and these ladies, I let them tell you now, when the budget gets bigger than what you're taking in, there's something wrong with that picture, or more than you're taking in. Well, I'm a positive fellow today. We're going to get a tax reduction. You listening up there? I made a bargain now, I ain't talking about that one penny, I'm talking about five pennies at least. And then after we get the sale of the hospital, we're going to come back and get five or six more, maybe more, you know. These foundations out here, you know, the hospital foundation, can you imagine how much money is going in there? Now, I'm going to give you some things to think about. We can solve our poverty problem. We're talking about government today and how beautiful it is, how much money's coming in and how much we're going to do with all this debt service? Good Lord, let me tell you something. Think about the poor people now while we're talking, okay? Let's talk about the poor people. I think Mr. Whiteside agreement here, that's the subject, is the poor people. All of us should be. We are the worst in the United States. Go to the New York Times and read it, 2016, and you'll find out the poor people here, how did they become poor and the government looked so good? The government here has looked good for years and years, money rolling out everywhere, property taxes, sales taxes, not, I mean, we couldn't ask for the millions of dollars any better than this county has brought in on the backs of the poor people that can't do nothing for themselves and we're having to take crumbs and give them. I'm tired of seeing the poor people get the wrong end of the deal. We need to think about some things for the poor people. Now, talk about education. I want you all to think what just been procrastinating or, you know, projecting. All this money for education, where's it coming from? Sales tax and property tax. What are they doing with it? Think about it. Bricks and mortar. We got beautiful buildings and we don't have the education we need for our kids. It's going to take more than bricks and mortar. I've hammered on this to you for years. We've got beautiful mansions now. We need to focus on the education where we should have been started with because the kids on the medium and the low end is getting screwed by the system and they're coming in here and talking about what a wonderful job they're doing. You talk to me and I'll tell you how bad it is.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, I remember when I asked Wanda Green, how much did Buncombe County use to spend for planning to think about zoning? And I was given a figure of $75,000. And then I asked a group of people in the building part of the zoning that they were, you know, planning on and what it would cost to incorporate zoning in Buncombe County and I got a completely different figure. So, at that point, I figured that there was a little bit of discrepancy between what actually was spent to try to plan what happened if they had zoning or not. And the infrastructure, in my viewpoint, from living here almost my entire life, is a nightmare. I go to Raleigh, I go to Charlotte, I go to all kind of other places in the state. They have sidewalks, they have a biking place for people to drive their bicycle down the road, they have parks everywhere, they have wonderful facilities for swimming, which is a real peeve for me since 50 years ago, we were out there at Scotland swimming and 50 years later, we're still out there at Scotland swimming. You have aquatic centers in a little city like Lenore, North Carolina, that is three or four times bigger in budget than what we have. You go out to Huntersville, North Carolina and you see a multimillion dollar facilities and it's about the size of North Carolina. You go to Maryland, Ellicock City and they have a county the same exact size as Buncombe County and you see 50 parks and places for everyone to exercise and walk and swim, play ball and have things for the children. You get 58% of your money is going to education according to the budget and I know this is awful because most people don't agree with this, it's about bounty and soul food, going vegetables to pass out free. So, I said, well, I'd like to know where they're getting the money to pass out free vegetables to anybody that'd like to walk up and get them. Well, nobody knows anywhere in any of the places I call it. We don't know. We don't know where they're getting it. Somebody quoted me, Buncombe County is supplying part of the money, so I said, well, you know, how much are they giving? Where is it coming from, et cetera, et cetera? And who gets to decide which produce company gets to supply the money given by facilities to these people who would like to have free vegetables and fruit? And I don't really want anybody not to eat properly, I want everyone to eat like. But I don't want people who can't afford it to get free food. And I don't care if it's mornings at school, afternoons at school or any, any problem besides that. Sorry, I have a thousand other things to say, but I don't have time. But just here in any meeting, they throw in $293 million, but, you know, that's not very much.
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
I know, I heard. Thank you so much for your time, once more.
Announcements. May the 8th, 11:00 AM, commissioners will hold a special closed session on NCGS 146, 318, 11A6 to consider a personnel matter at 200 College Street, room 326. On May 8th, 12:30, commissioners will hold a work session to hear budgeting presentations. The work session will be held on the first floor, room 200, College Street, downstairs at Asheville. On May the 15th, commissioners regular meeting at 200 College Street, room 326. Mr. Fruth, do we have any need for closed session?
I see.
Thank you, sir. So, basically, I'm going to close this meeting. May I move with you, Jerry? Yes?
Yes.
Instead of going to say, yes, someone can say it. Aye, aye. Ayes. Have rating in everyone.